At this time, we'll call the meeting to order and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember LoSi.
Here.
Councilmember Mobley.
Here.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Here. Thank you. And our first order of business today is a introduction of a couple of new employees, first being our new Assistant City Engineer.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and City Council. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to introduce our new Assistant City Engineer, Ryan Frogga. Ryan comes to us actually from a few years working at Scotia Sawmill and before, as the resident engineer down there. Before that, he comes from the Chico area and actually spent some time there at Chico State getting his degree in mechanical engineering. And then he also has an interest and did some work in civil engineering as well. So, we're really excited and pleased to have Ryan here. He joined us about two weeks ago, a little over two weeks ago, and has instantly been a great asset out in the field. Obviously, we have a lot of active construction projects going and, you know, we need eyes and ears out there, you know, making decisions and observing things and making sure things are going well. And we've been able to integrate Ryan right in and he's working out great. We're really excited and I'm happy to continue to see his growth here with the city. I think he's going to be a great asset for us. When Brian relocated over here, actually for the job at Scotia Sawmill, he moved to Fortuna, so he, his wife and his kids live here in Fortuna. And in his spare time, like many of us, just like to enjoy the great outdoors and all the things that, you know, living here in this wonderful community has to offer. So, with that, it's my pleasure to introduce our new Assistant City Engineer, Ryan Frogga.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for having me. It's good to meet you all. I'm glad to finally get to be here. I had been trying for this job for a while. I actually had a bookmark to the Employment Opportunities webpage on my computer that I checked regularly, so I knew when this job came up. And I'm really excited to be here, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you and welcome. And our next introduction is of our new Account Clerk, and I believe Aaron is going to make his introduction.
Yeah, good evening, Council. So, it is my pleasure to introduce our new Account Clerk, Chris Jennings. As you, as you know, the front counter is kind of the first stop for our public and it's heavily dependent on good customer service. And so, Chris has come to the city having some customer service experience, most recently working for Les Schwab in Eureka. She's already shown a nice calm and collected demeanor when she's dealing with some very difficult customers, and so she's just doing a really great job in that area so far. Chris and her husband currently reside in Eureka where they raised their two children. And Chris's sister Debbie actually works in the Parks Department, so there's some history here. So with that, I wanted to introduce Chris Jennings as our new Account Clerk, and we're excited to have her as on our finance team. So, Chris, if you want to say anything?
I didn't go ahead and talk.
Surprise.
Everything that Ryan or Aaron said was true. Yeah, I do have a long career of customer service and when I was interviewed, Aaron actually asked me if I like it, and I do. I, I'm a people person and I deal well with the, with the public. And yeah, right, my first week, we had a really challenging issue, but I didn't have to deal with it, Rachel took it. But I do know that, I do know how to diffuse situations. I know that if they're coming at you hot, you don't come back at them hot. And so, anyway, I'm happy to be here and yes, my sister does work in the Parks Department and yeah, I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Well, thank you, and with that, we'll move to oral comments from the public. If anyone has something they'd like to comment on that is not on the agenda today, this is your opportunity to speak. And seeing none, it looks like, we'll move on to our consent calendar. We have, I believe it's 11 items, the City Council Minutes, Administrative Department Monthly Report, Community Development Monthly Report, Finance Department Report, Parks and Recreation, Police Department and Public Workers Reports, River Lodge, Report of Disbursements, Annual Military Equipment Report, and Authorization to Submit a Letter of Support for an HCOG Grant. Does anybody have anything they'd like to pull? And with that, is there any comment from the public on the consent calendar? Nope, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as printed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? None? And with that, we'll move down to our business items, and as we discussed earlier, we can move the Humboldt Skate Park Collective Addendum, Item C, up to the top. And do we have a staff report?
Yeah, Cameron Moll, our Parks Director, will be bringing that staff report for the skate park.
Thanks, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. I'm happy to bring this exciting news to City Council and the community. So, you know, staff, staff's recommendation is to authorize the city manager to execute an addendum to the city's existing agreement with the Humboldt Skate Park Collective to build and maintain a half-pipe, also called a vert ramp, at Newburgh Park. So, in summarizing my staff report, back in 2018, the city started working with the Humboldt Skate Collective. They were doing some fundraising and showing some interest in wanting to build an eventual skate park at Newburgh Park. At the time, we kind of identified the bike park as maybe that location. Shortly after that, the bike park was redeveloped and we had decided to apply for a couple grants for Newburgh Park expansion and improvement through a Proposition 68 called the statewide park program grant. That, those conceptual designs and plans included a concrete skate park at Newburgh Park as part of the expansion. Unfortunately, in both rounds, in 2021 and 2020, when we applied for those grants, we were not awarded those grants, so we kind of were back to the drawing board. We were obviously able to purchase the 8.4 acres using Prop 68 per capita funds, but the skate park, you know, kind of went away. That was of that $7.3 million project, 1.5 million of that project was the skate park, so the majority of that, the features that that new expansion and development was for the skate park. So, since then, the Humboldt Skate Collective has still been fundraising efforts in order to make this a reality at some point, and so they reached out to me with the possibility of building a half-pipe revert ramp at Newburgh Park, kind of in the interim, more as a permanent structure, but something that to give the community in the meantime until we're able to find funding and build that concrete skate park. And so, our current master plan includes a skate park located near the existing bike park, which is where this half-pipe is slated to go as well. And I do have a PowerPoint presentation after I summarize the staff report. So, I've been working with Humboldt Skate Collective, in particular Charlie Caldwell, he's the president, he's here tonight, he can probably answer some questions as well. And they've shown some interest in, again, in wanting to build a ramp here in Fortuna as they have from the get-go. They recently built a half-pipe ramp down in Garberville, similar style ramp, and have learned quite a bit from building that ramp and now would like to see learned quite a bit from building that ramp and now would like to see a ramp built here in Fortuna. I will say, you know, that would be very much welcomed with the community. There's a lot of support for skateboarding. Skateboarding sometimes gets a bad reputation, or skateboarders get a bad reputation, but they're athletes just like any other sport. And the fact that there is no skate park or availability for any skating features here in the Eel River Valley kind of piques our interest as far as seeing this as something that could happen here at Newburgh Park and something that would also complement our existing bike park, which is the only paved pump track in Humboldt County. So the, I'll go over some of the details as far as the half-pipe goes, but it's approximately 52 feet by 36 feet. It's got a bi-level section, as you'll see in the plans when I show that. One section's six and a half feet tall, and then the other section is five feet tall. The majority of the section is five feet tall to encourage younger skaters to participate in, in that activity. It would be built out of wood with the exception of some synthetic materials to, for the surfacing essentially, which would protect the wood frame and, and provide longevity. So we've already established an MOU with the Humboldt Skate Collective back in 2018 for that. At the time, they were fundraising, it was just for right of entry so that they could think about getting design plans for a skate park. So we've essentially reached out to our attorney and had them amend the existing MOU or create an addendum to the existing or previous MOU as the right of entry. With, with that comes with and as recommended by our city attorney to have a CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act, notice of exemption for that area, which we are in the process of. We posted that on the 6th of June, and that should lapse, or at least the deadline for that is July 6th. It's 30 days, and hopefully we won't see any protestation in that regard. Of course, you know, the city would oversee the project and there, all the building permits, et cetera, would have to be taken care of in advance, and that's something that the Humboldt Skate Collective is willing to do. They're working with a landscape architect and the designer, which is BP Drywall and Construction. So these would be professionals and people with experience, in particular, some volunteers as well, who've been skateboarding in the community and the county for many, many years, who have been dying to see something like this happen. As far as the fiscal impact goes, the Humboldt Skate Collective has currently fundraised $14,000. The estimated cost for the ramp is around $50,000. Of course, they're going to solicit materials and donations for, for as much of that as possible, so they're going to see how far they can stretch some of that, that funding. I will go into the PowerPoint presentation if that works. So Sienna, if you can let me share my screen. Okay. There, there. All right.
I don't know. There's echo there.
There we go. No more echo. All right. Okay. Why isn't it going back? There we go. All right, so this is for the Newburgh Park Half-Pipe Ramp Project in conjunction with the Humboldt Skate Collective. So some of the benefits I already discussed. Let me move this out of my way here, and I don't know why it's doing that. So this would further expand our recreational opportunities and activities for the community. Again, there's no local public half-pipe or skate ramp opportunities between Eureka and Garberville. Really, the main place that I see a lot of our local skateboarders is skateboarding in front of the Fireman's Pavilion on the stairs there, which isn't really necessarily would be considered a skate park by any means, but it's all that the community's got at the moment. I hear, I've heard a lot since taking on my position over five years ago about, we need more stuff for kids to do. Well, here's an opportunity, right? The bike park, if you've driven by the bike park, you've seen lots of kids out there playing, and this would be no different. However, this is for all ages, just like the bike park is. But as far as just having another recreational opportunity that's free for kids to have access to, this would be a great recreational facility for them. Again, all ages and skill levels would be welcome with the bi-level design, which I'll get into, and the majority of that being a lower level. And again, it would complement the existing bike park. We'd also be able to host events. I know Charlie and the HSC would like to, you know, once this comes to fruition, see some events held there, but mostly bringing in tourists. There's a lot of families that travel through California, and if they've got a skateboarder in the family, they are going to stop at every city that has a skate park. So I can guarantee you, there would be many people stopping in Fortuna to utilize the skate park and spending the night shopping, spending money. So that'll help bring in some local tax revenue. Because the Humboldt Skate Collective is willing to construct this, this ramp, it'll take a minimal amount of finance obligation from the city. So they're willing to build it and maintain the ramp in its perpetuity as long as they exist. Of course, you know, as part of the addendum, the ramp does become, once it's completed, becomes city property, but we'd like to work with the Humboldt Skate Collective in future years when it does need maintenance. However, you can see here, it's got a minimum 10-year lifespan as far as maintenance goes before it would require so. Some of the design plans, I'll just kind of breeze through these. These were in the, the agenda packet. So here, here you have the site plan on the left. You can kind of see that black arrow kind of points to a green fencing. That's the bike park essentially, where you see that kind of SD in the bottom left corner. And that rectangular shape with the red stripe through it would be the, the future half-pipe, which is, would lie just outside of our softball field number one outfield. Then you've got an overhead view, which kind of shows the dimensions of the skate ramp, showing the 52 foot by 36 feet dimensions. And here on the left here, you've got the two-tiered level, two-tiered ramp for all levels. And again, the majority of that being that lower level. And then a side view of the ramp showing again those dimensions where the higher level is up at six feet tall, and then the lower level is at five. Of course, there would be railing around that top portion of the ramp to keep people from falling over or off of the ramp. Here's a rear view where you can see most of the length of that being that shorter level for more novice skateboarders. And then the foundation, which is a pure block foundation, plenty of support, cross members, those, this would all be wood as well as the framing. And then, of course, that surfacing I was talking about, I believe it's called gator skin. It's similar to like a Trex material. It's a synthetic material. And then, of course, we've got a sample picture of the ramp from Garberville. And then eventually, we'd like to see, you know, some artwork. I know you've probably seen in a lot of my Parks and Rec staff reports, a lot of vandalism and graffiti. This is something that could go up well in advance of that, that would hopefully deter any of that from happening because it would be already, you know, have, have some flavor to it, if you will. And of course, this would have to go through the Fortuna Art Council first in order to be approved. So all of the artwork would be approved before it would be painted on. And then I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, we've got members of the Humboldt Skate Collective here that might be able to answer some questions. I'm sure they're going to want to make some public comment, but I'll open it up to council if you have questions.
Anybody have questions?
I really like the project. I, I think that it will go very well with Newburgh Park and all the other activities that we have there, including the bike park. I, I do, in looking through Exhibit A, as I read through the insurance provisions and information, it sounds, it sounds like that the liability insurance is primarily during construction. And so I just want to make sure that the insurance, liability insurance also carries over beyond construction, but during operation.
I don't see that as an issue. I know that Humboldt Skate Collective carries their own insurance. Of course, we require insurance if BP Drywall Construction does end up being the contractor for that job. Of course, we would get their insurance prior and throughout the project. And then every year, we would just request the Humboldt Skate Collective renew their insurance with us and endorse the city as additionally insured.
And one, one other addition too. We checked with the city's risk pool, and they cover skate parks in each of the cities. So the skate park would be owned by the city. It'd be covered under the city's risk pool. And there's a couple of changes that we might bring in the future for like wearing helmets and things. So Cameron's got some draft ordinance from Sierra to reduce the risk to the city for injuries and other things like that. So there's a, I think it's pretty well ironed out right now with the other cities all having skate parks, and so we'll follow the best practices from, recommended by Sierra. I know Cameron's been talking with them, and so ultimately be the, the city's responsibility for that, for that bit outside of construction.
That's correct. In fact, I pretty much have the bike and skate ordinance completed, but I wanted to bring this to council first for approval before it just became a bike park ordinance. But I wanted to wrap the skate park into that as well. So if this is approved today, you'll see that coming at a very near future council meeting to pass an ordinance, which basically states what the rules are for both the bike park and potentially future skate park, and they would be posted onsite as well, just like they currently are for the bike park.
Okay. I know that with half-pipes, people do get injured. Will there be a requirement for a waiver, signed waiver by the users, or is that something that?
Cameron had the discussions earlier on with Sierra about that, and I think their practices are, you know, I don't remember what.
The ordinance and the, and the posting of the signage with the rules that are required is really all that, that you would need. So the ordinance and then the sign.
It's an inherently dangerous sport, and I think it's making sure the public knows and they would know what their responsibility is for the safety gear and that the city makes sure to put that out there in a way that's understood and people understand what the rules are.
Protective helmets, pads.
Yes, exactly.
We can go through that when we bring the ordinance back for the bike and the skate park.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to say one thing if I could. Yeah, appreciate the tenacity of this group, Charlie Caldwell and the group. They've been trying to fundraise and bring this activity to Fortuna for a long time, and we're really pleased the bike park got in there. And I know this group's going to ultimately be successful in getting, helping us to get a real skate park here. We'll keep pursuing grants, but they put a lot of time and they have not gone away. So I'm sure you'll hear from them to public comment.
And I hope the fundraising goes quickly and we can get this, you know, eventually put in fast.
Yeah, and if you notice, in the addendum, I added 28 months, I believe it was. So it would, you know, it basically gives them plenty of time to, to construct a ramp. So I think it would have been October 2025. And if we need to extend it, then we need to extend it, but hopefully it's something that can happen sooner than later.
And at this time, we will open a public comment if anyone wishes to comment on this item.
Hello, I'm Charlie Caldwell. I'm the lead for Humboldt Skate Park Collective, and this is my Fortuna team behind me here. Just to kind of give you a heads up, we, after 23 years, have actually broke ground and started the McKinleville Skate Park. We moved dirt on Saturday, so that's not going to happen here. Actually, our goal is, is to try to have this half-pipe in by the end of the summer if everything goes well. We haven't necessarily locked in our contractor group. We were just having discussions of maybe actually using a local contractor that's going to potentially be donating some of our materials. And so we actually see this as a quick moving, get, get something in the ground for the kids to start skating on, and us to utilize for raising funds for the bigger concrete skate park, which, you know, are way more expensive. The estimated cost of a project like this is around $50,000, but with in-kind donations and everything, our goal is to keep that way down, way, way below that. When you were talking about the Garberville, that was the community of Garberville that built that park, and they didn't actually go after permitting for it, so they asked us to come in. So we walk, we've been walking them through the permitting process with the county to get that all finished up. And one of the things we've ran into is the ADA issues at the Southern Humboldt Park, and we're walking through that with them right now, just trying to get all the engineering stuff and everything laid out and that completed so they can move forward. Eventually, we'll have a concrete park there. So the more of these concretes, you were talking about tourism, the more of these concrete parks we have, people come to the area, they stay in the area. And I was just talking with a member of the Bear River Council, so they're a source of funding for this project also. We're, so I'm working, we're working right now on getting an audience with them, presenting this project once we have the okay here, and seeing what kind of funding that they will provide. So just to give you guys a, a bigger picture of the approaches and areas that we're looking at right now. And any other questions for?
I was just going to bring up, because I think you're the, the one that, you guys brought out some ramps and stuff, and our church did a skate thing at the, at Roner Park with a barbecue.
Yes. And I am continuing, I just overhauled all of my ramps, because I'll be setting ramps up all summer long. Actually, on July 1st, we're at Jesus Rocks Redwoods, and then down at the Madrone for the art boards, which is all about selling these art boards to be able to give kids skateboards in Eureka. So, so yes, the ramp system's still going to be out. We'll probably have it down here as we're in this process through the summer. So anyway, yeah, that's kind of been my last three weeks, is putting all these ramps back together and making sure everything's functioning right.
There's a, there's definitely a need, because there was probably 100 people at that other event that our church put on, and you guys brought stuff for, and they were from McKinleville to Garberville, I think they came and hung out.
It was a great event. Yeah.
So thank you for what you did there. But there is a need, I guarantee you that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Jesse Coleman with Skate Park Collective. We obviously have had challenges with fundraising, but we are going to use this, the actual, something to bring before the people to say, we haven't gone away, but we've been a little stalled for a while. But when we actually feel like there's something that we can put in front of them, the plan that can go out now, and to go to the different businesses and to break ground, I think the community will get really excited again. And so like Charlie said, that is going to be our big push this summer, is showing the people that we haven't gone away. We are building something, and then that should catapult us into the permanent skate park. So that is our hope.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, well, that will close public comment and entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an addendum with the Humboldt Skate Park Coalition to build and maintain a half-pipe range, a pipe ramp, I'm sorry, at Newburgh Park.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think it says roll call.
It says voice.
It says voice.
Oh, okay.
And none opposed.
No.
So with that, thank you very much. You got a project.
Thank you.
And I think the community appreciates. Thank you. And we will move on to, after I work my way through a million open windows.
Good job, Cameron.
All right, we come to our next business item. A public hearing for the second reading and adoption of our Organic Waste Disposal Ordinance 2023-761.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Johnson. So this is the second reading. At the last city council meeting, we went through, we, we held the first reading of this ordinance, and staff is recommending that the council hold a public hearing to conduct the second reading and adopt ordinance 2023-761, revising Chapter 8.14 of the Fortuna Organic Waste Disposal Reduction Regulations that Implement and Enforce Cal Recycle Organics Regulations in SP 13883 compliance, with the general change being from July 1st, 2023 to January 1st, 2024. And let me just, the language actually in the recommendation, it should be July 1st, 2024. And so that's the way that it's carried through in the ordinance and then in, in the rest of it. So that's just a typo in the recommendation. So it is correctly stated in the resolution. So a copy of the, the draft ordinance is, is attached to the staff report? And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for the, answer any questions regarding the draft ordinance.
Okay. Well, we went through this with the first reading, so. I was just hoping that we would have got some good supply chain-ish news, but I don't think it's ready yet, so.
No, and we have another item that'll be coming up after this one, where we're going to talk a little bit more about where we're at in the overall compliance schedule.
All right. compliance, with the general change being from July 1st, 2023 to January 1st, 2024. And let me just, the language actually in the recommendation, it should be July 1st, 2024. And so that's the way that it's carried through in the ordinance and then in the rest of it. So that's just a typo in the recommendation. So it is correctly stated in the resolution. So a copy of the, the draft ordinance is, is attached to the staff report? And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for the, answer any questions regarding the draft ordinance.
Okay. Well, we went through this with the first reading, so. I was just hoping that we would have got some good supply chain news, but I don't think it's ready yet, so.
No, and we have another item that'll be coming up after this one, where we're going to talk a little bit more about where we're at in the overall compliance schedule.
All right. Well, we'll open this up to public comment. If there's any public comment on this item, and seeing none, we'll close public comment. Entertain a motion.
Sure, I'll go ahead and move to conduct a second reading and adopt ordinance 2023-761 by title only, and it calls for a roll call.
I'll second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call?
Ordinance 2023-761, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, California, amending Title 8 Health and Safety of the Fortuna Municipal Code by revising Chapter 8.14 Organic Reduction and Recycling Ordinance. Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes. Thank you. And now we come to item B, authorize a supplemental budget request for additional discretionary payment to CalPERS retirement system.
Yeah, so good evening, council. So I just wanted to first kind of go over the goals that previous councils have put in place in regards to unfunded liability. And so that has been to be proactive in managing our unfunded liability. And in the past, the city has made a couple other additional discretionary payments. So this is, this would be the city's third time making an additional discretionary payment to PERS. Another one of the goals is to smooth future mandated payments, which I'll show a graph. We've seen some of that in the past from previous unfunded liability payments, and this would further that goal. And then finally, we want to make sure that annually, I'm bringing this forward to the council so that you can take this information and use it towards making future fiscal decisions as we go through the year. Any SPRs that come before you can kind of have this as a, as a reminder for what the city has as far as an unfunded liability. So this is kind of the bigger picture where the city stands currently. The city's unfunded liability is a little over $12 million. It's broken into two plans. One is miscellaneous plan and one is safety. Safety is essentially all of our sworn police officers and sergeants, and then all our other employees fall under miscellaneous. You can see in parentheses, a large portion is for.
Excuse me, Aaron, can we shut the door? Yeah. I'm sorry.
No problem.
Yeah.
They're excited about that new skate ramp out there is what all the chatter is.
So you'll see a large portion of the unfunded liability is attributable to what we consider classic employees. And so those are for all employees hired prior to 2013. So essentially, we're not accruing new unfunded liabilities, at least not in the last 10 years. We're just working on paying off those unfunded liabilities from employees from prior to 2013. And so the current discount rate, you can see 12 million. If PERS was able to earn an additional 1% over the next 20 years, you would see that the unfunded liability would be 7.3 million, so considerable, considerable about less. On the other side of things, if PERS earned 1% less than what they expect, the unfunded liability would be close to 18 million. And so I put up in the top right that over the last 20 years, CalPERS has earned an average of 6.9%, and that is about where the current discount rate is. So as long as kind of history continues to be our guide, we should be at about that 12 million mark for unfunded liability. And then just as a point of reference, about 70% of that is attributable to the general fund, which is about $8.4 million. And so I talked about this a little bit, but over the past 10 years, a number of things have been done in order to try and prevent the unfunded liability from growing. In November of 2012, what was called the Public Employees' Pension Reform Act was passed. That's called PEPRA. And so that changed the retirement formulas for employees hired after January 1st, 2013. And so essentially, their retirements were, they paid out less in their pensions. And so the cities didn't have to put up quite as much into paying for those. And so the city isn't taking on as much of a burden for new employees hired after 2013. A few other things that came from the PEPRA was that they decreased their discount rate or their expected rate of return on their investments from 7.75% down to 7%. And so you can see, kind of going back to the, to the last slide, by them just changing what they expect to earn, it increased the city's unfunded liability by about $5 million. And you can see they, they lowered it to 7% because that is kind of where their historical average has been over the last 20 years. And then the third bullet, because fiscal year 2021 had a 21% investment return, it did trigger an automatic decrease in their future expected return. So because they did so well in one year, they now expect over the next 20 years to earn less, and so they decreased it further down to 6.8%. And then finally, CalPERS changed the unfunded liabilities that are put onto cities from 30 years down to 20 years. And so the annual payments just kind of went up because it was spread out over fewer years. So this is a chart of where unfunded liability payments are projected to be over the next 20 or so years. You can see in this current fiscal year, we paid about $770,000 for unfunded liability payment, and it's projected to go up to $1.3 million in fiscal year 2031, 32. So it's almost doubling over, over the next 10 years. And so that's why we're really trying to work on getting those higher-year payments down as much as possible, so we don't have, have that budget crunch in those future fiscal years. And I also wanted to point out that because of the additional payment that the council authorized last year, it did lower that fiscal year 31, 32 payment from what would have been about $1.5 million down to 1.32. So we are seeing some, some positive returns from, from making these additional payments. So staff's recommendation is to make a one-time additional payment to PERS in this current fiscal year 22, 23. As I have stated, the council's made two previous additional payments. The first one was two years ago for $255,000, and that resulted in savings of $276,000 in interest payment savings. And last fiscal year, the council made a $1.54 million additional payment to PERS, and that resulted in about $1.75 million in, in interest payment savings to the city. And so we can think of this kind of as, you know, just paying more on your home mortgage, you end up paying less in, in interest if you pay it sooner rather than waiting to pay for it. So with the current recommendation of 1.4 million for this current fiscal year's additional payment to PERS, that would save the city about $985,000 in interest payments. And so here's just kind of a graph showing that effect. You can see the highest year 2031, 32, it was a little bit over 1.3 million. With making this $1.4 million additional payment, that would bring it down to about 1.15. So another $150,000 would come off that peak year, which is going to be extremely helpful as we move forward. And again, we'll see about a million dollars in interest payment savings by making the additional payment. So where would this money come from? We'd be breaking it up based on payroll. So where employees' payroll is charged to between the general fund, Measure E Fund, Building, River Lodge and Streets Fund, all those funds are essentially, we consider them general funds since they're subsidized in one way or another by the general fund. And so between those funds, about $938,000 would be needed of the 1.4. And then the remaining, about $450,000 would come from our water and wastewater enterprise funds and our transit enterprise funds. And so the reason that staff is proposing 1.4 million is because 938,000 is what our fiscal year 21, 22 actual surplus was. And so following the, what we've done in the past couple of years, using that additional revenue that we weren't expecting and some salary savings that we weren't anticipating, putting those to this PERS payment has worked really well. And so that would use the full surplus that we saw in fiscal year 21, 22. And so this shows where that would put our reserves. Currently, we have about $6.5 million in reserves, and this would take it down to about $5.5 million, which would still leave over $1 million above and beyond our reserve policy for council to use at your discretion over the course of the next year. And so that does conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, and it's staff's recommendation to authorize a $1.4 million payment to PERS.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
I do. It, it looks like, and I might have asked this question in the past, I don't remember the answer if I did, looks like the magic year, fiscal year is 31, 32, when the unfunded liability payments start going down finally. So what, what happens in that particular fiscal year to cause that to happen after that year?
Yeah, so 21, 2031, 32 is the highest is, is because when they initiated this unfunded liability payment kind of structure, they amortized it over 20 years, like I stated. And so that's the last year of kind of the big upfront 20-year amortization. And now there's kind of a rolling 20-year period where each year, if PERS doesn't meet their 7% investment portfolio, they amortize whatever the losses is over 20 years. And so you'll see those kind of future years continue to grow as that happens. But 21, 30, 31, 32 is the highest because they, in 2013, in 2011, 2012, they started that kind of initial upfront, and it was a, it was a really big number. So that's why that one's so big.
Our 23, 24 budget came in at just a little bit over to be in the black, just a very slight amount. And I know that there have been some changes since then to make it a little bit more, maybe. But when we get reports from engineering, for instance, with the new police department construction, that some of the contingency funds are going over and probably will continue to go over what we had projected. I have a little bit of concern about that with regard to such a large payment, $1.4 million going into this unfunded payment. And dropping the general fund reserves down below $6 million, although I think 5-point, whatever you said, 4 million is a good number for our general fund reserves, I've got some concerns about that particular project going way over what a contingency has been planned for.
And I think I could probably speak to the project. Right now, we're, we have a pretty good idea. We've uncovered most of the changes that we think. There might be some add-ons, but the number that we expect, and again, we're not there yet, we haven't gone over the council authorized budget, but we are expecting to ask for different optional things. But we're talking in the order magnitude of $100,000, not like a million dollar change or something like that. And so again, those will be brought to council. But if you wanted to say on the worst-case scenario, being between $100,000 and $200,000, that's, that's, that's the worst that we'd be looking at on that building project. You know, the whole building's been exposed. We've gone through the whole scope of the project. So I don't think we have a lot of exposure, and a $200,000 number is going to be high. We're considering looking at things like adding solar and other, other items like that that would reduce our long-term expenses for the building. But right now, we think we're going to be able to complete the building very near what the council-approved budget is.
Okay, good. And are we not required to have solar on that?
We're not required to. And what we're looking at is, we did submit an application, and we got it in under the old net metering standards so that the city would see more of a benefit from that solar in a shorter payback period. And so, you know, the energy, you know, and all the appliances in that building are electric. And so what that would do is with solar, we'd be able to reduce our costs probably to almost nothing for the electrical operation of that building, I think. I forgot what City Hall is, but it's $1,000 bucks a month or $1,500 bucks a month, something like that. So anyway, it'll be an option that we bring back to council, I think, to stick to this item. You know, on the outside, we're 200,000, and I think that's high, but we're doing a pretty good job and we're, of managing what's happening there. And we've experienced most of the changes. So I think we're in good shape. Likely, we will go slightly over, but not a, not a large amount.
I like the idea of the ADPs and getting that long-term funded, unfunded liability down. So I like that.
Well, and that's really been our goal is, as we've been looking at this, what really is hard to accommodate in a budget is when you see that additional discretionary payment go up. That's really when the city started experiencing problems in 2012, 2013. We started to see the city go from the red, I mean, from the black to the red, and passing Measure E really got us out of that. And we, it's really important because we're not going to see sales tax typically fluctuate and increase as much as that additional discretionary payment, or, excuse me, the, the.
Liability?
Help me out, Aaron.
Unfunded liability payment.
Go up every year. And so our idea, if we can flatten that curve, then, you know, we should be able to afford that within the revenues that the city has. And, and really, that's the effort here is, sure, we could find another thing to do with the $1.4 million, but we think this is being responsible to pay down this debt ahead of time rather than spending that money now and reducing the city's long-term liability.
Hopefully, future councils will look back and say, hey, those guys did the right thing.
That's what we're trying to do, is preserve future funding and future viability. So that's.
You know, and I think, I think the city's traditionally done that and taken a conservative approach and really trying to, you know, pay as they go and to take care of the liabilities to get to a point where the, we have a manageable budget. So I, I do think future people will come back and look at this council, just as they have past councils. We've consistently made those kind of tough decisions.
And we've maintained our reserves. We've kept money aside for catastrophic infrastructure failures and operating capital. You never know when the state has a deficit, how they're going to figure out a way to balance their budget off the backs of the small cities.
Or when we have an earthquake.
Yeah. It seems to be becoming an annual event. At this time, we'll open it up to public comment. If there's anybody in the public that would like to comment on this item. No? Okay. Well, in that case, we'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to authorize city manager to execute a supplemental budget request and make an additional discretionary payment in the amount of 1.4 million to be paid to the CalPERS Pension Trust to recognize interest payment savings.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion and a second. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? And we'll move to our next item. And thank you, Aaron, for dotting all the ayes and crossing all the t's in that. And so we come to the professional services agreement with CSG Consulting for SB 1383 compliance and franchise agreement development.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson. I have a fairly short PowerPoint slide here that I'd like to pull up. Looks like you can see this. So what staff's recommendation is, is that the council authorized a city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with CSG consultants to assist the city with SB 1383 compliance in development of an updated franchise agreement. Just real briefly, for background, in 2016, the state passed SB 1383, and it put a number of responsibilities on local jurisdictions like the City of Fortuna. One of them is to provide organics collection services to all residents and businesses, establish an edible food recovery program, conduct education and outreach to the community of the new requirements and the new programs, procure recyclable and recovered organic products, secure access to recycling and edible food recovery capacity, and then take on the responsibility for all of the compliance monitoring and conduct the enforcement activities on behalf of the state for the new regulations. Real briefly, the state took from 2016 to 2020 to come up with all the rules, and the city had to come into compliance in a very short period of time, less than two years. And, you know, there's a number of obstacles to doing that. One of the primary ones is there's no means right now to collect the organic material. If we did collect it, there's nowhere to take it, to package it, and, and bring it to a recycling facility. There's no recycling facilities in Humboldt County. All of that takes time to develop, and the project timeline is less than, you know, it's, it's more than the two years that we had from the passage. And so the way the state's showing they're serious about compliance with SB 1383 is they given what the city, what's called a corrective action plan, and that has a series of timelines and tasks that the city has to complete in order to demonstrate, and to demonstrate a good faith effort to doing those things. The city's done a number of things. We passed the organic recycling ordinance. We're working collaboratively with the county on a food recovery, edible food recovery program. We're working collaboratively and contributed to HWMA's effort to retool their transfer station to be able to take organic waste. So we're working on all these things, but we have not, we're not currently in compliance. And there's really, you know, I highlighted some. And there's really, you know, I highlighted some of the main areas. One of them is that the state is requiring that we have three container collections. So everybody in the city of Fortuna will be required to have collection, solid waste, recycling, organic waste. The organic waste recycling will have to be collected and taken somewhere. HWMA is working again on that and Recology would haul it there under the solid waste franchise agreement. Edible food recovery, again, we're working with the county and a consultant on that effort. There will be a lot of education and outreach needed to explain to the public the new programs. And then the city will be required to change its procurement policies to buy a certain amount of organic recycled product every year, such as certain quantities of compost that frankly, the city doesn't need, but we're going to have to purchase and find something to do with it. And then lastly, we're going to have to do quite a bit of documentation reporting. And you can see in parentheses on the right, you know, rather than hiring another person to do this work, we think we can get a lot of it done in-house, but our main strategy is to work with, again, HWMA and the county on certain aspects like the edible food recovery program and a consultant for that, working with HWMA to find a place for the recycled organics to go. But most of the tasks come back to our, our solid waste franchise agreement. And in order to put those tasks on our solid waste franchisee, we need to be able to update our franchise agreement. And that's why this item is really on the agenda, to be able to get some assistance. This type of effort to modify our franchise agreement is something that, well, let's just look at our last one, it was, it was, it was executed in 1998 and it really hasn't been updated since then and it's 2025. So, you know, we're about 30 years. And so I guess from a staff level, it's our feeling that we need the expertise to be able to kind of have a better understanding of what's happening in general with franchise agreements statewide and then also to understand the costs and be able to review those ones for their fair, because this is the kind of thing that in-house staff, we don't have the expertise and we want to make sure that, that we get it right moving forward. One of the things that we've done, looking at costs, I, I will say the city of Arcata, city of Eureka, Humboldt County, they contracted with Bell and Associates to do an audit of Recology's operations and their solid waste fee calculations. And they were coming to town to do that work and do the audit at the Recology facility. So I did administratively execute a contract with Chris Bell and Associates to do that. So that works in progress and what we hope to do is have the financial analysis back to demonstrate two things. One, that the rates that we're being charged are appropriate and two, that the proposed rates for the new SB 1383 rates also are appropriate. And so far, I think it's going really well. We talked to folks from Recology and they, they thought it was great to have Chris Bell be there and I, it sounds like he's, what he's seeing are, you know, things that, you know, the, the rates are fair that we've been seeing thus far. So I'm, I'm glad to get that feedback from both the, the analyst and from Recology of how things are going so far. Solid waste franchise agreement, we've kind of got to a point that we're a little bit stuck. We had, we were working with Coolantano Law Firm and they provided us a draft, which was more or less, it was a example that they had taken from another agency when SB 1383 was brand new and it was very long and put most of the, most of the, the, the goals for diversion onto the solid waste taller. But it was, it was kind of too long and then we had another similar franchise agreement, a parallel franchise agreement from Recology that we felt really didn't, wasn't specific enough. And so our goal right now is to work with the consultants at CSG to be able to redline and come up with a document that meets the city's needs and also is acceptable to Recology that we can negotiate an amendment, which would really be a new franchise agreement with Recology. So included in CSG's work is a review of the franchise agreement. They'll initially review the franchise agreements drafts that we have, as well as the corrective action plan from CalRecycle. They'll do a compliance review and make sure that the draft franchise agreement includes all the services we need. They'll provide the redline franchise agreement with suggested changes. And then they'll also review the work that Bell and Associates did and recommend fees for those services and then also provide additional technical assistance. And one of the big ones is not understanding this industry, you know, likely the way rates are charged are, is going to change in this new franchise agreement and Recology has to make an investment of, a capital investment in new trucks and new totes. And so they're going to want to spread it out over a 10-year period. Again, we just want to make sure that the, the, the rates that we're seeing are fair and this is our chance to do that and make sure that franchise agreement is set up in a fair way for the consumers and for our solid waste franchisee. So we do have a little bit, the good thing is we have budgeted some funds for this. The, let me first talk about the expenses. The proposed cost of services for CSG's contract is 22,000. We previously approved work with Bell and Associates for 12,000. So that's right about 25,000. We have 35,000 right now budgeted for, to come from solid waste fund to 10. We also received a grant from, for 20,000 that came via the state from AB 1985, which we spent about 5,000 on one of the collaborative efforts with city of Eureka, who actually contracted for the work for HWMA to do the improvements at the transfer station. That's a little interesting, but they were able to get that done sooner. So we have the total revenue of about 50,000 remaining and this is about, excuse me, 50,000 total budgeted and we have about 20,000 remaining after the contracts with CSG and Bell Associates are complete. So that's where the funding would come from, for this project. And with that, the recommendation is to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with CSG consultants to assist with, the city with SB 1383 compliance and development of an updated franchise agreement. If you wanted to, you can add a not to exceed amount. The proposal is for 22. I didn't, you know, I didn't think to put that in, but you could cap it at 22,000 or, you know, if there's other things needed, you could say not to exceed 25,000. Either way, I think that, either way, I think it would be fine.
Okay.
But that would be in addition, that's not written in the recommended actions. If you, I think it would be good to put a dollar amount there. My suggestion would be 25,000, because it seems like things always come up.
In the motion, it doesn't specify whether it's a voice vote or a roll call for this, so.
It says a voice vote.
Anyway, it is a voice vote. Because on the one I'm looking at, it doesn't say that, but. See?
Yeah, mine doesn't either.
We will make sure that it's there next time, but it's a voice vote.
We'll make sure that vote is on there next time.
Okay, so with that, is there any council questions?
A comment.
Comment.
I think the last council meeting, I, I mentioned some concern about the upcoming franchise agreement, even though it's several years off, as well as the, you know, possible rates increasing and some of the issues that CalEPA is, they're requiring us and the pitfalls that the city could, could have. So I'm, in, in CalEPA, it doesn't look like they're going to provide any agencies any relief with regard to their requirements. Their dates are going to be, you know, they're pretty well set in stone and it doesn't look like they're going to back up on any of those. I'm really happy to see that, Merritt, you've stepped up and hired a, or were going to hire and you looked into, you know, providing this consultant, CSG, as well as contracting with Bell. There are a lot of pitfalls that the city could, could get into, so it's with, with the action that we're going to take tonight and the action you've taken with providing Bell on our side and, and hiring them, I feel much better that we're going to be in a, in a position to be able to protect our citizens and the city. So I thank you for taking those steps.
No, I, again, I appreciate it. It's just, you know, the things that you do once in a great while that you're not an expert at, you really need to be careful with. And so that's, that's kind of the approach that we're taking on this one. And it, I just realized after getting into it, you really have to understand the business a little bit more than, than again, I do or anybody in our staff does. So that's why we pursued this.
Thank you. Yes, thanks. You've done a lot, lot of research in here and looked at it and went, this is outside my normal wheelhouse, so. But at this point, is there any public comment? This is one of those nice things that comes about because of unfunded mandates and somebody's good idea. Now, I would like to find out if anybody knows what the baseline here is that they're using to base those reductions on, because I tried to find it and it's, could unable to, but that's not necessary for today, so. And with that, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and move to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with CSG consultants to assist the city with SB 1383 compliance and development of a franchise agreement, not to exceed, the cost not to exceed 25,000 dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and it's a voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And no opposed, so thank you and go forth and protect the city's ratepayers. All right. So now we'll move to city manager's report.
Thank you. I'll be brief with my report. I just wanted to mention a few things regarding our Schedule I, as we have our 3rd of July festival on Monday, July 3rd. And so we have opted to cancel that council meeting that day, so everybody can get out and enjoy the fireworks festival in Fortuna. Our next planning commission meeting will be on Tuesday, June 27th. Our next Measure E meeting is still ways out on September 19th, 5:30 PM. And our next Rona Community Recreation Park District meeting will be on July 5th at 2:30 PM. And then our Fortuna Business Improvement District will be on Tuesday, June 27th at 8:30 AM here in council chambers. So that's all that I have to report.
Okay, thank you and we'll come to council. Well, first off, is there any other agenda items that people would like to have brought forward?
Yep.
Okay. Then we'll go to council reports. We're all changed around, so. Ms. Chris?
Oh, sure. I didn't have any meetings since our last city council meeting. I did want to mention though that Pepper's on the 3rd Wednesday of the month does donate 15% of all orders to the Fortuna Senior Center. So if anyone has an opportunity to go for breakfast, lunch, dinner, dessert, whatever they do, donate all the proceeds from tomorrow and then every Wednesday.
All right. Thank you for that. And Mike?
Thank you. Are you acting mayor or mayor protem?
Mayor protem.
Our parks meeting was canceled due to no quorum of commissioners and the Rona Community Recreation and Park District meeting was also canceled. So I didn't have any meetings. I did go to a memorial Saturday at the rodeo grounds for Roy Kerlos and it was very well attended. Roy was a local resident here and just involved in so much that was going on in Fortuna, in particular the rodeo, fire department, but, but the rodeo, he was the president of the rodeo association for, I believe, what'd they say, 25, 30 years? Long time. It was a good, great turnout. The, the family was there, we had a lot of people from out of town that came in for that and it was an honor to be able to be there, so, and say goodbye to Roy. That's all I have.
Okay. Well, I also had a meeting canceled for lack of a quorum and a groundbreaking. I was able to attend the groundbreaking for the Indianola Overpass project that was held up at Indianola and Highway 101. And it was a, a well-attended, some HCOG board members, a lot of present and former Caltrans officials were there and some of the CHP. And it was mentioned that that project pretty much started development in 2002 after a four, four-person fatality at that intersection. And that was when they started trying to put everything together and develop a plan and funding for that. And yes, or this last Thursday was the culmination of that and Granite will be starting that project that's probably started that evening, that afternoon. So that was a good, good thing. I also attended the service for Roy, 66 years on the rodeo board, which sounds crazy, but it's just two years less than I am old. So that gives you an idea. I have a very good perspective on how long he was served on the rodeo board. And he did serve as president for the majority of those years. And it was a, a good time to see the family that came out and did him an honor and for all that he's done, both in the county and in Fortuna, especially in Fortuna. And as far as I know, we will have a HCOG meeting in July though, so I'll report back on that. And with that, I think we've come to the end of our meeting for this evening. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
We're going to adjourn to closed session. So you need to probably read about.
Oh, yes, that. We are going into closed session. So we will adjourn to closed session for a conference with labor negotiators, the city negotiator, the city manager, then unrepresented employee, the finance director in accordance with section 54957.6 of the government code. A motion to adjourn to closed session.
Make a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Okay. I'm not saying. And aye, and we will adjourn to closed session.